The April 29, 2021 Open Public Finance Meeting of the Woodbridge Township Board of Education will please come to order. Please rise for the flag in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Ms. Bordain.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Tamborello.
Here.
Mr. Treeblosser.
Here.
Mr. Velez.
Here.
Ms. Anderson.
Here. Dr. Zager, would you like to present your presentation?
Mr. Secretary, as required by the sunshine law, please read the notice of meetings.
Thank you, Madam President. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place there posted as follows: April 12, 2021, emailed to, and also April 21, 2021, emailed to the Home News Tribune, Star Ledger, and the Municipal Clerk's Office, posted in Ross Street School Number 11 and the Board of Education Administration Building, also published on the school district website.
Thank you. Dr. Zager, you want to do the budget presentation?
Certainly, Madam President. The 2021-2022 Woodbridge Township Public School District Budget Presentation, and this will be posted on the website tomorrow. The vision, as always, to seek and engage the entire community in instructing and inspiring our students to be successful and significant beyond our classrooms. Our mission, as always, we will develop through a technology-infused curriculum lifelong learners who are responsible citizens prepared to make positive contributions to the global society. We are committed to engaging all members of the community in the process of providing a learning environment that fosters interdependence, embraces change, and values diversity. Core beliefs: Great teachers, and they were great this year. Continuously effective and engaging instruction will lead to increased student achievement. All children can learn, but learning takes effort. Every lesson should be a positive learning experience for every child. Every child deserves our best every day. We're here to help children, and we need to give our children what they need. One of the things we wanted to highlight is our early college initiative. Currently, dual enrollment advanced placement courses have 1,274 enrolled in one or more of the 55 courses that are listed, and these include our dual enrollment courses as well as our AP courses, and that's across our three high schools. If, I forgot to mention, if any board member has any questions, just jump in. Now, we have over 80% of our students entering college, and we have 20% of our students, our high school graduates, not entering college, so we wanted to make sure that we have a robust career and technical education program. We have our structured learning experiences, which is similar to the old work-study, something that we started this year in partnership with the Zuckerberg Institute. We have a post-pandemic task force. This is comprised of 15 high school students from across the district, and they're mentored and interact with successful business leaders in Zuckerberg Institute's network. And our business management course was recently recognized as a CTE program by the NJ DOE.
The business management program, is that at all three high schools?
Mr. Bader, is it at all three?
Yes, I believe so.
Thank you.
Okay. Our budget presentation includes these four sections, starting with our revenues. Tax levy is increasing by 2%. Our state aid last year, as with the past couple of years, has gone up, so we had an increase of 18.5% in our state aid last year. Our surplus also increased. Semi- and miscellaneous revenues, however, went down. Miscellaneous would be our interest. But overall, we had a almost 6% change in our revenues, 6% increase. Other revenues include our SRECs, our E-Rates, and our different grants, and our interest. And this is a graph that just illustrates a little bit better the proportional revenues. As you can see, 70% of our budget is still from our tax levy. Local tax impact based on $75,000 valuation. Our proposed increase for this year is $108, which would bring the tax bill for that value Our budget, which is approaching $300 million, as you can see, the bulk of it is benefits, Now, that may look like a lot, but our per pupil costs are still way below state averages. So we invest in our children proudly, but we also invest wisely, and we spend very, Instructional materials, and here are a couple of new courses and programs and revised curricula that we have. As you can see, over $95 million is budgeted for instruction. Now, some of our new programs that we have, and we have made a significant investment in our students and our summer programs for catching up, remediation, and for credit recovery in a high school. Starting with our elementary students, and all these programs are in-person, except for the, we will still be running a virtual program, and all virtual, similar to what we did last year, but we have at all levels, elementary, middle, and high school, an in-person program, starting with our live Summer Bridge Elementary Academic Support, our virtual summer school for middle school, and we'll also have a credit recovery, the Twilight Academy is for our high school students, and all that will be in-person.
The live Summer Bridge Academy program, that will be optional for elementary students to participate in?
What we're doing, Mr. Harris, is trying to target our most at-risk and our most needy students, which each school has identified, and trying to prioritize them in that program.
Okay, as in, an invitation, or could they turn it down? How is it?
Well, we can't really make them go, but we'll strongly suggest that this would be vitally important for any student who didn't excel at virtual learning to get back into some live instruction and be ready for September.
Okay, all right, and we'll be, well, there's a question. Are we providing transportation for those students over the summer?
So the idea is we will have four sites located throughout the township, kind of spread out through the township, and each of those sites will have several sections of each grade level, and then transportation will be provided. It'll be a half-day program for about a month, and we're just hammering out the details, and hopefully, if the budget is approved, we can get this word out to our parents as quickly as possible.
And would the same go for the middle school program as well, or slightly different criteria?
We've been doing the middle school for a while, but we need, will probably be expanded, and the invitation criteria be expanded also for our middle school. And for high school, it's less complicated because those students can, if they need to recover credits in just one course, they could take that, just that one course. And hopefully, if they, again, we're talking about students who struggled with virtual learning and/or had other issues going on in their household that made it this year typically hard or abnormally hard.
Okay, for the high school students, will that be in-person or virtually?
That'll be in-person, but it'll be digital instruction.
Got, right, right. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair.
We're also adding new virtual dance instruction, and this is something new from Trenton, that all elementary students will have a dance component in the curriculum. And we're also talking about an AP Summer Institute, which is something that we, something new for us, where we're, our AP students are always looking for a little bit of a leg up, or we give AP assignments over the summer, but this would be a chance for those students to get together and work on those assignments and make sure that they are ready for September. And then a couple of pilot programs in theater arts, theater arts production, and world cultures. Technology, we have a couple of programs going in, Google Workspace, as the board approved last meeting, and we made the purchase, each, every teacher in the district will be getting a laptop, a new laptop, that will be a very powerful tool for them to do their instructing. Since we really don't know what that instruction will look like in September, up till now, many of our staff have been using either Chromebooks or iPads, but this will be a uniform device for teachers K to 12 that they'll be able to utilize, better cameras, better memory, and more memory. We're also adding, as we add our more and more devices to the district, it's important that we make sure that we have a system to maintain those devices. We're adding another field technician for our, to address that. And we're also adding student Chromebooks. We ordered roughly 6,000 Chromebooks with our COVID or stimulus money that we received. We also received a substantial digital divide grant. We ordered them, everything, anything in technology right now, especially Chromebooks, is kind of backlog, so we're still waiting on those deliveries, but we're adding roughly 6,000 devices to our inventory, and those would be Chromebooks. Now, we know that many students had a difficult time being home, not seeing their friends, not interacting, not having those social opportunities that they usually have, so we want to make sure that we have some programs in place to address all of that. We're continuing with our Effective School Solutions. We're adding, and I'd like to highlight, we're adding counselors in each elementary school. We have in our budget this year one counselor per elementary school. Previously, those counselors were shared and kind of part-time, but now we will have, we have 17 elementary schools, we will have 17 counselors to help individual students. I'm happy to present a budgeted position of Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, and that would be a full-time position similar to the one that we have now that's part-time, but a full-time position to coordinate all equity activities in the district. Additionally, we wanted to set aside some money for each schools. Each school has an equity team and a diversity council. Each school will get some money should they want to play any activities, and we also wanted to earmark some funds for district-wide professional development in equity and diversity. Now, of course, those amounts, if they need more, there are ways to get more money, but at this point, for our district-wide, it's 300 per school and 5,000 district-wide. Our facilities upgrades. Now, these are projects that are not related to the last referendum. These are projects that we either budgeted for or we have financed through cap reserve. The HVAC upgrades at Woodbridge High School continue, and we're hoping, or we expect to have that all done, and that's a brand-new heating and air conditioning system throughout the school, removing the old boilers that were original, and basically, I think they're building two separate, two more boiler rooms in addition to the ones that they had. We're also adding a great deal of security equipment. We're taking a look at, and this is, some of this is referendum, some of it isn't, but we're taking a look at all of our entrance ways for all of our schools, especially elementary, and try and create systems where people do not have access to the entire building once they get through the front door. Our fire alarm systems, we're upgrading our clock systems, our concrete and paving, and also our district-wide PPE. We want to make sure that we're ready for September with plenty of PPE. Referendum projects, which we've talked about before, the electrical updates, upgrades, they will be probably started and completed over the summer. Remember, these are the ones especially for Island Middle School and Avonel Middle School did not have the electrical service to install classroom air conditioners, so this will fix that problem. The additions at 25 and 22 and 24, they'll take obviously a little bit longer. And 28 also is getting in addition, renovation of JK Fieldhouse, that is supposed to, I believe, start over the summer. HVAC upgrades at School 18, again, that's a summer project. Basketball backboards and locker room summer projects, new steam labs, one in each middle school. You notice Woodbridge Middle is not included because they had their complete renovation. Security upgrades, parking lots. We have, I believe we have delivered already our unit AC, our window unit ACs for all of our elementary schools, and they will be installed as we speak. And then the rooftop replacements, I believe that's going to start soon. And that the referendum, that we added them to highlight them, but that is not part of the budget, that is separate from the budget. Our, tonight is the open public hearing. The final budget adoption will be next week on May 4. If anyone has any questions, any members of the public have any questions, feel free to email me or call my office. I'd be happy to discuss any of the items with you. And that concludes the budget presentation. Any questions from the board?
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Zager, Mr. Wolferman, and anybody who was involved in preparing the budget, all your, all your team at School Street. There's a lot in here that I like a lot, some things I don't like. So before I get into those, I'd like to get an update on some of the line items, if you guys will indulge me for a little bit. Mr. Wolferman, I'm working with an older budget, but I think nothing's changed. 262, architectural engineering, we spoke a little bit about this increase. Maybe you can explain that line item?
Yes, Mr. Tamborello, that line is designed to, we have in the budget some projects, as Dr. Zager mentioned, outside of the referendum. In order to do those, we would have architects working on them, so that would lead to additional architectural and engineering fees.
Have we identified those yet, or this is an estimated?
We have some identified. We will be looking at more. We've met with our architects, and we plan to do a facilities plan that will help us to determine exactly where to focus.
Okay, so that line doubled, so that's why I'm literally highlighting that. Appreciate the response. If we can go to line 558. Our P O C consultant, did we go over the budgeted amount for 2021 on that one?
Mr. Tamborello, I don't believe we went over the amount, but we have had a lot of additional concerns, and we want to be ahead of items such as we've had in the past where P O C has been called. We just want to make sure that we don't have to worry about those issues ahead of time as opposed to reacting after something's happened.
Good, but you're not sure if we fully allotted, fully used up the 2020 allotment yet?
I would have to check.
All right. Let me go back to 514, contracted services.
Again, that is related to things that we would be doing within the district, repairs. Again, we just want to get ahead of things as opposed to waiting until things fail. We've had, you know, issues, fire escapes that ended up breaking, so we're, we want to be ahead of these items.
Okay. Another large, large increase item. One thing I know that comes up every year on our insurance, and I know we estimate every year, and I know it is prudent to add a percentage to the hospitalization line item. We always get those numbers late. Do you have an update on whether or not we have hospitalization numbers?
The latest that we received was 8%, so that takes into account where we're at here. It is always possible those numbers come in lower, but right now, it's 8%, and we didn't want to be caught short.
Does that come from the broker, from the insurance?
Yeah.
They forecast, hey, be prepared for an 8% increase?
Correct. The broker works with the insurance companies, Horizon and others that we could potentially use. They get some quotes from them early. They try to negotiate something better than what they were originally given. It also has to do with our experience, and in this case, our experience is down a little bit this year because less people, believe it or not, have gone to the doctor due to the pandemic. However, there are projections that once this is lifted, more people will actually go to the doctor, and it'll start to tick back the other way.
That's acceptable reasoning there, but that line item is up, just calculating it, probably 11 or 12%. And again, I understand we need a cushion to protect us from any unforeseen extras. One of the last items, the, and I don't know if this was the projects in the presentation, but for 1534 and district-wide capital improvements, is that the list that we, I mean, as, or is that going into the reserves? The $6 million line item, that was not there last year.
Yeah, that, correct. That is for some of the items we've seen in the presentation. We also know that we have projects that are out with our bond referendum. We may want to do additional things to support that referendum, and this would allow us to do it. So it'll be a combination of projects throughout the district, plus, just making sure if there's projects that are already part of the budget or referendum, we have those funds to do it.
So we have a lot of plans. We're increasing in our capital expenditures and our capital improvements, but this is a line item that we didn't have last year.
Correct.
That is now $6 million. All right, thank you for your explanation on that one, on all these. Again, I appreciate it. We'll go back to the presentation, and let's confirm surplus a little bit more year-over-year, and basically holding steady at the 20 to 23 or $4 million a year, is that safe to say?
Yes, that is correct. The surplus, what happens after we receive surplus, by law, we cannot keep the surplus in our bank. We have to reinvest it in the following year's budget and subsequent budgets after that, depending on when we receive that surplus, and that's what we've done. So it does tend to stay pretty even, year-over-year-over-year, but that money is always reinvested, it's not just sitting around in the bank.
Understood. Glad to see that it is steady. I don't think I saw in the presentation any federal revenue. We are expecting some grants, CARES 1 and 2, but that was not in the presentation, but we do expect, and we may have even gotten a heads-up on how much to expect, correct?
Yes.
But not in the presentation. Dr. Zager?
Like any of the grants, we don't budget them. If we get them, great, but we can't really bank on that we're guaranteed getting them at this point.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify that even further, this is an operating budget presentation. There's a special revenues budget, which is something that comes from some of our grants like the No Child Left Behind, IDEA, and the ones you spoke about, CARES Act, Digital Divide. Those are not part of our operating budget. If the money comes in, we then can allocate it towards different expenditures as is allowed by those grants.
And it's good to know, I think we can safely assume that we will benefit from those in the future.
Yes.
Federal stimulus money, we can assume will be there for us.
Yes, we know what we've received so far, Digital Divide, CARES Act. There's one that we have, we are applying to allocate the money. There may be further ones down the road, but I'm very conservative as an accountant, so I don't, I don't really consider those until I know that we have them in hand.
And similar to last year's budget, the state aid that we presented at the budget hearings and that was adopted by the board subsequently changed, so we have to be ready for that.
Yeah, that was my next question. We've also benefited positively recently from extraordinary aid, which you expect July or August, I think, correct? We assume it happens like previous years.
We do receive extraordinary aid for special ed students. That does come usually over the summer.
Well, it's not necessarily earmarked for special ed, though. It's extraordinary aid.
Extraordinary aid is actually a special ed funding. It's related to special ed. But as Dr. Zager mentioned, we also lost in our state aid millions, I think it was $8 million, when COVID hit, from the state aid that we originally had budgeted. We lost that last year, so that, I think, is what Dr. Zager was referring to, that we have to be prepared for that as well.
All right. So I'll fast-forward, close my comments. Again, some of the metrics I don't particularly like, again, there's a ton of great stuff in here. I'm not a fan of the, of the tax levy, I'm not a fan of the year-over-year spending increase, but it's something that, you know, I think we're going to continue to look at, and I hope we do, and that's my comments for this evening. Thank you. Madam President, thank you.
Madam President. Mr. Wolferman. When going through the budget, I noticed that there's a lot of unexpended monies. Is that due to the fact that we had, because of the pandemic, people weren't in school, things that we would normally be funding and paying for, that the increase in this year's surplus is more due to a not spending than an over-budgeting, because there are certain functions that we just have not been doing because we've either been remote or hybrid or something else?
Mr. Treeblosser, yes. I actually spoke to the county about this, and we had a discussion, and the reason our surplus is high is because of certain things that we didn't spend on. Recently, it's been transportation costs that we didn't have because students weren't going to school, other tuitions where kids were not going out the way they normally do, substitute staffing has been significantly lower than it has in the past. So a lot of our surplus is, like you say, related to unexpended funds.
Yeah, I know there was, I noticed there was some significant expenditures that didn't happen only because of this year of people not being in school, but next year, they will absolutely be spent. It looks like there's a few million dollars in transportation costs that we didn't spend on, between the bus aids, OT bus driver overtime, and things of that nature, and then I also noticed there's some other expenditures that just didn't take place. I agree with Mr. Tamborello wholeheartedly. We certainly need to take a very serious look at how we budget, and most importantly, how we expend our money so that we are providing for what we budget, that we give the students everything that they need. I noticed we had a significant amount of money left in OTPT, in other services that we could have offered, and I think that because we were remote and because we didn't have full in-school education, I think there were a lot of things that we would normally have expended those monies on. I believe that's why they were budgeted. I believe that's why they were budgeted in the first place, and that's really what has facilitated this additional surplus. But what is our, our actual net surplus? I mean, the, the amount of money that we actually get to have and have sitting in the bank, so to speak?
Yes, Mr. Treeboss, that net surplus is only around $3 million because all the other surplus that we accumulate via the audit is then reinvested. So it's only $3 million that we have to use for other things other than what's already in this budget.
And is that kind of in the percentage that, you know, we're looking to be at? Because I, I had heard they were increasing the percentage we're allowed to keep for surplus due to the pandemic and unforeseen things that, that may come up. Because I don't think anybody in this room or anybody watching this has a crystal ball and can say what our students are going to need going forward to help them to catch up or to give them additional services that they need to be able to help them to get to grade level.
Correct. Mr. Treeboss, 2% is the normal amount of surplus that we're entitled to keep. Anything above that does go back into the budget. This year, as you mentioned, it was raised to 4%. As part of being fiscally responsible to both the taxpayer and the school district, we did not look to keep the 4%, but we limited it to the 2%. And the 2% is a number that you've probably heard before, because that's also the amount of tax levy we can raise. We cannot ever go higher than 2% increase from the previous year on tax levy.
Well, we could, but we'd have to do an outside question, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Mr. Harris?
Madam President? Yeah, I have a few things to the chair. Not, no particular order of influence, just from back and forth, and thank you to Dr. Zager and Mr. Wolferman for your assistance in answering a number of questions. The CARES Act 2, I see we're getting 6.4 million. It was indicated that Mr. Bader was working towards applying for, for the use of that money. I know it's, it's not yet determined, but I know it's going to be spent on a number of different things, PPE to learning loss, to HVAC upgrades, among other things. I want to make sure that the administration knows we have to spend that before January. Could you elaborate on, on the direction we're heading in? Was Mr. Bader put in charge of it because it's going to be focused on curriculum and instruction, or, or he's just kind of taken the, the lead on, on that at this moment?
Yeah, Mr. Harris, when we first received the grant, I think I brought it to Dr. Zager's attention, and I think because there's so much curriculum involved in getting the students caught up.
Right.
The decision was to have Mr. Bader look into it. He and I have met briefly on it. Once he's met with his team, he'll then present me with where we're going to spend that, those funds. And yes, May 14th is the deadline by which we have to fill in the application.
Oh, yeah.
And there's a variety of different uses possibly for these funds, and the administration, I think, as a whole, has to come up with the best use for these funds.
Okay, all right. May 14, we should, we'll keep that in mind, and all right, that's terrific. Good. And thank you to our, our federal taxpayers for sending us the money. Nextly, as, and really for the public's benefit and the rest of the boards, the FBI Committee, we were talking recently, we're, we're scheduled to get 16.4, excuse me, 16.2 million from the American Rescue Plan. That was the, the Biden stimulus, if you will, that was passed on March 11, was signed on March 11. And the White House has indicated that 30 to 60 days from its passage that they provide guidance to the, to the states and to the school districts on how we could use that money. 13 million of that is, to my knowledge, with no strings attached or, or very broad. And then 3.2 million on top of that to the 16.2, that is for learning loss or learning recovery. So another exciting piece of change coming our way, thanks to the American taxpayer. Nextly, ba-ba-ba. So I'm, I'm sure, from what I'm told from the governor's office, at least May 11 before we see any guidance, so.
I'll look out for it.
We've got even more time on that. I'm sure probably later this spring or this summer, we'll be applying for, for usage of those funds, and it's a nice, healthy piece of change, of course. Just going down my list here, I apologize. All right, American Rescue Plan, got it. All right. Again, no order, you know what, I'll stick with a couple of questions here. Mr. Wolferman, you had answered my question about the Voic. We're spending $470,000 on phones. Don't forget, it's not particularly relevant to what line of the, the budget it is. And you had said that we are paying Spectrotel. What exactly do they provide? I'm certainly not familiar with the company by the name Spectrotel.
Mr. Harris, they are, we have a phone system that's more involved than just picking up the phone and calling. They are the, the phone company that we use to provide phones throughout the district, our ways of talking between schools. So we have direct connections with that, you know, from school to school, as well as talking to the outside.
Okay, okay, all right. I just, you know, not being a technos, a technologically savvy person as far as Voic goes, but you know, when I think of phones being over the internet, that, you know, whatever we pay for the internet would be, you know, since we have our own internet infrastructure, whether, you know, in partnership with the town, that, that our phone bill would be significantly less than 470. For that contract, have we looked for other vendors or anything of that nature in, in recent years? Just, you know, it just seems like a, like a lot of money for not a particularly sophisticated amount of technology.
I believe that the system is proprietary, that we need to use them in order for it to work because of the fact that it's, you know, it has certain voicemail features and features that you can't just get anywhere and simply use over the internet call. But we can certainly look into it and see if there's an alternative that, that could be more cost-effective.
Sure, sure. In my time on the board, you know, this is year nine for me, not familiar with us, you know, seeking a, a different vendor. I know Treeboss is better versed on, on Voic, but I think perhaps that project was initiated shortly before I, I started on the board, and certainly, I think, maybe even right after I started, we had already initiated our own fiber optic network in partnership with the town. Just want to make sure we're getting our best bang for our buck and not letting these guys get too comfortable with us. Mr. Wolferman, would you also be able to provide, you worked on this a couple of years ago for the Buildings and Grounds Committee, was an air conditioning audit? Just thinking about some of the spending in the budget, contracted services, the referendum in relation to air conditioning, and it being important to many of our parents, particularly in September, May, and June, when it could get a little steamier in our classrooms. Could you check, you know, I, I, you probably just have to upgrade what you, or update, excuse me, what Mr. Paglia did only a couple of years ago, where we were around 50% air-conditioned in our school district, like our elementary schools were nearly 100%, and our secondary schools, middle and high schools, not quite there. However, since, we have spent a lot of money on air conditioning, individual units, the roof tap, the roof mounted units, plus what we're doing in the referendum, plus Woodbridge High School being entirely air-conditioned now. I'm curious what's left, and then if we would consider using some of the contracted dollars and the $6 million in capital improvements, if we would consider finishing off the, the district in an equitable manner? Every student, every teacher has an air-conditioned classroom. If we could just find out what the balance is and then consider addressing that in, in the next budget or two, however long it takes?
Yeah, Mr. Harris, Dr. Zager, he made that a priority.
Oh, yeah.
When it came to the bond referendum and air quality for the schools.
Right.
So we have actively pursued doing that. I will get you the updated numbers, but I know it's a priority for, for the, the district and the board.
I think it, it should be a priority. We hit that 100% mark, and we could tell the public, you know, for kids with asthma or allergies or whatever, that our, our schools are, are comfortable and so on. Dr. Zager, you got it?
I believe that at the schools that are waiting for the electrical upgrade, they have their window units ready to go.
Yeah.
Once, once they upgrade the service to the building.
Right. Fantastic, very good. All right, I promise, Dad, I'm almost done. I'm going to eat dinner, too. All right, just a, a few compliments here. The six additional guidance counselors, Sue, I hope I'm not stealing your thunder. I know that was an important issue for you. You know, as family that I have working in the elementary schools over the years, the guidance counselor at the elementary level almost plays like a, like a vice principal at, at that level. The principal has a lot on his or her plate. Having an additional guidance counselor, an additional person to be there as part of that central administration, if you will, that's huge, and I know it's going to be, it's going to benefit our students. I, I've heard it for many years that we need more guidance counselors, so, so thank you very much for, for making that happen. With the P O S H, it's sort of a question and a compliment, the P O S H consultant, what exactly does he or she do? They try to prevent P O S H complaints, or they are responsive to P O S H complaints? What was the role?
Yeah, Mr. Harris, it's not a specific person that's going to get this job. It's not a salaried position.
Okay, I thought it was like someone we hired.
But it is, we do hire companies to do both of what you said. Sometimes we'll bring them out to do reviews, check the schools out, so that we can have people checking to see if there's issues with mold or ventilation or things like that that could lead to problems. But we also, should something arise, we would bring those, you know, those companies out to investigate and figure out how to correct those problems.
Okay, all right, great. And that was one of my questions, I know Mr. Tamborillo asked the same. I think it's a good thing, you know, the thinking on it now that ensuring a, a safe environment for our, our friends with the, with our, our bargaining unit, multiple bargaining units we have. So, you know, ensuring that our, our workers are, are working in a safe environment is, is a good thing. As the Chair of Buildings and Grounds Committee, I want to thank you for the, the $6.5 million for the capital improvements between additional contracted services money and the capital improvement money. I know, I know there's some, some high-level thoughts as to how we could spend it, so I, I hope we, we continue to spend that wisely and continue to engage the Buildings and Grounds Committee along with all the other members. And then the final compliment, if you will, is the, the additional $200,000 for curriculum development. You know, Mr. Bader, I know your team will be working hard this summer. Mr. Masumian, I know you'll, you'll put together some great committees for us. Last year, we had to shelve a lot of that due to cuts, as well as frankly, the, the necessity, knowing what, what the upcoming school year was likely to look like. So thank you for investing in our students and our, our curriculum guides, ensuring that we have the most modern and updated curriculum possible. And you know what, one other compliment I missed here was the, the learning recovery program. Dr. Zager was questioning you there earlier. I, I think parents are going to be pleased about the opportunity to get their students additional, you know, you know, learning enrichment and recovery and so on. So that, that, that's an important part of our, our thing. And then similar to Mr., what Mr. Tamborillo said, we've, we've long been on the kick about spending wisely and property tax relief. You know, I like the double-digit increases we've had over the years, past two years now, we've been over $100. It's, it's a little concerning, but I, I had a, a great conversation with Ms. Anderson past couple nights, a commitment to scrubbing our budget, you know, on, on a year-long basis, not, not just during budget season, that, you know, when we get to full funding from the state, we're about 4/7ths the way there. We have federal money flowing in over the next, next few months that, that like us, you know, like Mr. Tamborillo and I have said, you know, for, for many years, we're, we're going to get that property tax relief the, the best we can and continue, you know, like Mr. Treeboss said, to, to continue to spend as wisely as possible. I, I know, Mr. Wolferman and Dr. Zager, you've, you've long done a good job, and, you know, you, you, you provide the, the resources our, our students need, but as taxpayers, we, we got to, you know, that 108, that, that's a tricky one, you know? And I, I'd like to see us try to, try to get that to a more reasonable number where, where best possible. So thank you all for your time, and thank you, Ms. Anderson.
In keeping with our past practice, we will open this portion of the meeting for questions and statements from the public regarding the budget. If you wish to say something, please come to the microphone, state your name in the section of the township where you reside. Please limit your comments to no more than five minutes in accordance with Regulation Number 1100D. No response will be given until you have fully completed all of your comments, so as not to interrupt your five-minute opportunity to speak. For those residents who were unable to attend tonight's meeting in person, you can email your comments to superintendent@woodbridge.k12 nj.us. Dr. Zager, do you have any emails?
I have no emails, but I, I have a comment. I'd just like to thank my assistant, Karina Morrison, for doing such a good job putting this presentation together. She does it every year, and this year she really helped it herself, so thank you, Karina. And Peggy, Peggy Rooney.
So I would like to thank Dr. Zager, Mr. Wolferman, and Central Administration for developing this budget. Thank you for the full-time equity, diversity and equity director. This really shows a commitment to continue the work of equity that we've been doing, so I really appreciate that. I appreciate the time and effort that you all put in to present to the public such a thorough budget presentation. So if there's nothing else, the Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
No motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Treeboss.
A second vote?
Seconded by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.